Draw. She bring me to this?
Thank you. I'll probably wait till after the meeting. I don't have a meeting with doughnuts all up.
He's got them, a mess of eaters.
Yes.
Matter of fact, I might already have a stain on there.
You say you already went to it on Tuesday?
Hi, I'm Joe.
Let's make the shooting balls well. That happens every once in a while.
One of these days, I think you might have to take me up to that thing just to show me what your service is.
That's what I always wanted to know, did anybody learn anything when they went? I love it.
Great.
Well, I've done it again. I've got a house that I'm making, I can't. You got a spirit, Ken?
You correct that phone call?
Didn't, yesterday was current.
That didn't happen?
I planned through to that.
Yeah. You got to charge him. Do you see Alex is going to be like?
Yeah, I was gonna say we're getting docked, hey? It's nine o'clock, if everyone wants to please draw their face flag and rip your hats. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First up, Daniel?
Yes, I'm Joe.
Daniel.
So.
If you go up to that podium right there would be great, that way we can get you in, I'm gonna shift the screen.
Just wanted to introduce ourselves, Daniel Griffin. I represent PHI Medical Stat Flight with the Membership Division. I want to thank Nikki Davis for her and her assistance yesterday for that open enrollment for your county employees. We are happy to be part of this group of, I guess, boys that's part of the membership that you have on the roster with us. And obviously, to introduce ourselves, good to meet you, haven't met you yet. Joe might know you so much, he lives down in Madison, Indiana, I live towards Abizil, Indiana. So, I just thank you for the opportunity to send it for you today, this is very high, and I'll pass it over to Joe McMahon.
Hey guys, I'm Joe McMahon, Program Director for Stat Flight. I suffer with the whole state of Indiana. I flew before, so I've owned a helicopter, played some patients, and just moved into this role about a year ago, so it's great to meet you guys. Just wanted to talk a little bit about the membership program and the way it works. Currently, you guys have the enrollment with all of the county employees that are covered. So, if a patient's flown, typically, the out-of-pocket cost is pretty low. The problem is, is that the co-pay, you know, a lot of times, if somebody has an agreement for deductible or a co-pay, they're still responsible for that. And where it really protects you guys, it's like a worker's pump or something like that, then obviously, it's all taken care of. You're just kind of aware of the county's position for location-wise. We have three aircraft that routinely serve this county. So, the Seymour base, it's there by the hospital in Seymour, they typically come over here, they go over to the hospital a lot, as well as doing scene flights, and that crew is really engaged with your EMS service. They do a lot of drills and trainings and stuff like those guys, so they all work really, really well together. And we also have a base down in Madison, Indiana, they're at the airport, and they'll respond up here. It's a couple minutes further, but they routinely will come up here to take patients. And then, as well as Rushville, they're at the hospital, they're in there. So, this county is positioned kind of right in the middle of three PHI aircraft, which is a huge opportunity. Currently, the county is, you know, county employees are covered with the membership. And I just wanted to mention at least that if you guys ever did have the opportunity, we do offer a county-wide membership that would cover the resident in the county, and it would also cover them if they were traveling to an adjoining county. So, like, if one of your residents was down in Madison and got in an accident and got flown, then it would be covered as well. So, obviously, it's, you know, the different agreement, contract and so forth with that. But if you guys ever had, you know, the opportunity to do something like that, we'd be glad to talk with you about it, because we do fly a lot of patients from the county. I think when Daniel and I pulled the numbers, it was around eighty, eighty patients a year that we fly. So, a lot of times, that's just a really good piece of mind for your residents, if you ever had the opportunity to do that, so.
So, you've flown typically eighty patients from Jennings County?
Yeah.
Per year?
And don't quote me on that, I'd have to go back and get the, and we can get you those.
Just do a rough number, and then, rough estimate, what does a, what would a typical stat flight cost a person that's not covered?
So, the way that it works, we bill the insurance, if they have insurance, we bill them. And typically, the, it depends on how far they're flown. Typically, it's around forty thousand dollars is what the bill is. Insurance, if they have insurance, that's what insurance as far as to cover that bill. The problem with it is, is the insurance companies will sometimes play games, and they'll try to put, you know, the patient has to pay the deductible, and they've got to pay a co-pay, and so our membership will take care of all of that. We have three other counties in Indiana that have this countywide membership, and we'd be glad to put you in touch with those guys if you're interested in it, if they, you know, the feedback from them is like, it's too good to be true, that, you know, we're covering everybody, they have no, you know, out-of-pocket costs or anything like that. So, Rush County's one of them that we have, and Warren County, Warren County and Fountain County, I, we're lucky that they're the ones that we've got the other contracts with. So, that's essentially what it is, is it just takes care of all of the out-of-pocket costs. And it's hard to gauge that, because the way a lot of people are switching to the high deductible insurance plans, and once again, they're responsible for deductible. So, if they end up having a ten thousand dollar out-of-pocket deductible, then that, that will all be taken care of, and we wouldn't, we wouldn't balance the patient for that, so.
So, the number one question that I get asked, and I don't know how to answer it, so I'm just gonna put you on the spot.
Okay.
We have this program, and let's just say either A, there's not a stat flight helicopter available.
Right.
Or there's someone else that's closer in the area, and someone gets transported by someone other than your county.
Correct.
How do we address that with the money issue of it?
So, unfortunately, it's only if we fly the patient. We aren't able to, you know, negotiate on the act of the medical service or anything like that. So, that is, you know, the downside of it, I will tell you, that this county, you know, with having the three helicopters around it is probably very unique in Indiana. Most counties that we have, you know, we've got one or maybe a second helicopter that might be a little bit, you know, further away. But here, you're kind of surrounded by the three, so.
So, what is a person's odds of actually being in that scenario where someone other than stat flight flies them?
I would say very slim to none, because they will call us. We treat our patients, so we'll have the first three aircraft in here. If it's a mass casualty accident, we need five helicopters, and obviously, we're going to get lifeline.
So, our EMS is responsible for making the call to you?
Correct. They'll tell dispatch to call us, and dispatch always calls us. The hospital uses us exclusively, so I don't, I don't know of a time where another service is kind of in their transport of a patient. It's not that it won't happen, but it's.
I know of one, but I'm not gonna bring it up, because hip and all that, but I do know of one, but it was before we had this agreement.
Okay.
So, it can happen, but it just maybe has.
Odds, brother.
Go ahead.
So, our, the reason why the county's doing this is because our son was at Aspen Acres, and was in a civil wreck, and had to be flown through eighty-sixth Street in Indianapolis, and didn't know about the membership at the time. My bill, we had to pay, was fifty-two thousand dollars. So, we look at sixty dollars, that's cheap. And that was in another county, so, and it was still their helicopter, and that bill was so.
Okay.
The total bill was a hundred and some thousand dollars, and then insurance, so we would have had fifty-two thousand.
It's a, it's a very, I'm not gonna lie, it's a very, very expensive service, but it's a life-saving service, and, you know, the cost of the aircraft and the crew, it's expensive at the end of the day, and we do.
I've seen the crew in action twice in my lifetime, it's impressive.
Yeah, they're incredible, incredible people, and I miss doing it, I mean, I also, yeah, I used to do that lack of a day, and I've kind of switched into this role. So, it's definitely a great, you know, service to the community, if you have the opportunity to do it. Obviously, I'm not as hyped as everybody, but I wanted to at least, at least mention that to you guys, so.
We looked at that before, didn't we?
Yeah, we looked at it before.
And it was cost prohibitive or something, wasn't it, to do the whole county?
It's a good, cheap insurance policy if you need it, we just hope you don't need it.
All right, any other questions, guys?
Nope, we thank you for your call, we thank you for what you're doing, we appreciate it.
We thank you guys for having us here, great to meet you guys.
And thanks again for the doughnut. Thank you.
Let me know, we'll get you.
You can fly, you can fly us some more in next week. Give us a demonstration.
See you. Moving right along, next up, Nikki. See you.
I have four travel requests from the prosecutor's office. Our prosecutor, Brian, attorney, deputy prosecutor, are needing to attend the IPA winter conference next month in Indianapolis. And I submitted those, they will be taking those out of their department.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have another one here for Randy.
Oh, okay. What about Jerry?
Said we had one for Jerry, too.
Oh, Jerry canceled his, you can disregard that one. Oh, I thought, I assumed that he canceled it. Yeah, but I seen that one.
About the Drew Dickerson? Oh, that was another prosecutor, I don't know. Okay, I missed that one, I thought I had them all.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and present mine, because mine's late.
No one's here, correct.
Went to the conference on Tuesday, one day event, no cost to the county, twelve percent of the budget, was eighty bucks. Made it there safe and sound, made it back.
Did you learn anything for eighty bucks?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
unanimous, so, so is this just one, this is Brian, this is Drew, okay, so all these are checked. So, the all the information.
You gotta pop the Randy down there, son?
Next up's gonna be Marie. There you go, thank you.
So, the unit package, you should have a copier, to get a, purchasing a copier from Office Shop. It was in the bond, I put in eight thousand dollars, and the quote come in at fifty-eight ninety. Our other one we purchased back in. We purchased it January seventeenth of eighteen, and so, it's just getting approved, and maintenance after maintenance, and we do so much copying. And the last time the service guy was in, he said, are you gonna get any more copiers soon? I said, actually, it was in the capital.
So, it was in the bond, it was pre-ized, and it came in, how many dollars under what you put in the bond? Because we need to keep track of that, because that'll be it.
She said eight thousand?
Well, I'm assuming it was approved, that's what, this was the one I submitted on November twenty-ninth of twenty-three. I submitted it for a copier for twenty-twenty-five for eight thousand dollars, and then this one came in at fifty-eight ninety.
So, Sarah, just be sure you're making note of the difference, because that'll be that much more money that we can spend on something else, since it came in under budget, which it usually, they usually never do.
Do we gotta vote for to take that out of the bond?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the fifty-eight ninety out of the bond for the copier.
I'll second.
Unanimous?
And then, I have to invest three thousand dollars for a computer. I had to have it earlier, so I took that out of my budget last year, so I won't leave that this year.
So, make a note of that also.
And that was for the computer? For this for computer. And those were for expenses for this year. And then, I had had it for a vehicle, I had to purchase that last year, and that came in here, too, so there's.
You had that in the bond as well?
But I had purchased it last year, so I don't know how it came in. I told them it was in the bond, it was in the bond for twenty-five, but I needed it last year.
Did you deal with the council on that?
I dealt with you guys and the council.
I remember spying, but I don't remember what we did.
I don't remember how they paid for it.
That's what, I don't remember how it was paid for, I just remember approving it.
But that was in my bond for this year, too.
So, that was about, what, twenty?
It was for fifty thousand in the, that I put in for the bonded. I don't know, I was thinking it was around forty-two, but I can go back on that. So, anyway.
Make a, make a note of that, to check.
Can we get to ask the council on what they did?
Yeah, I don't know how we're gonna hear that one. Okay.
The other thing I have, I need permission, I have a clerk retiring on December twenty-sixth, and the council cut my budget, cut my person to part-time, so I'm asking to hire part-time. Tonja is going to retire and start on her retirement, but I'm gonna hire her back to work part-time.
So, they're not gonna allow you to fill that position full-time?
Is that gonna be the one, or different department?
That's what it sounds like, because Marie's pretty busy. Marie's pretty busy, be cutting employees.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I am gonna tell you right now, I don't, I don't know how it's gonna work out, because she's gonna be gone till March, so I'm, I'm not allowed, I'm like, I'm doing it, so.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the part-time employee, but I think you probably need it full-time.
I'll second.
unanimous?
Would that be you guys making policy for part-time?
We don't do the salaries, so.
Right.
And I have seen the salary ordinance, so I don't even know how much is in there and nothing, so.
I guess if we don't agree with it, we could agree to create a new, a new part-time position.
Say, see how you get along, and then we'll deal with it.
And Nikki mentioned that, that it wasn't working out, so come back and then see what.
I was gonna say, that's the best thing, dude, just see how things go. With some of the new policies we put in place, you may not be as busy as you were in the past, so let's just see what happens.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sherry, I'm sure you have something.
I have a, my other financial commitment letter to turn in for the federal aid for Bridge sixty-five. Right down here. We're gonna turn in both and help with getting that one.
I already got the council to sign the commitment letters on both, so I'll make a motion to sign for Bridge sixty-five.
I'll second.
unanimous?
All three of us got it signed now?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have we got everything situated for the removal of the rabbit in the chicken barn?
Yeah, it's gone.
Already carried it in.
Starting to carry it in today?
Brian said he was already working on it.
Boy, did I ever get to chewin' over that one.
You must struck some feelings, didn't it?
I do, I don't have the names of the highway people, but I wanted to brag on them a little bit. They came in from the highway, they, they were brutal. Very professional, they were very helpful, and we got it done, and I can't say we, I was there, they were, they were doing the physical aspect of that, and they moved all of those into the horse and pony barn, and they'll be there until they get all that taken care of, or if they get new ones.
I wouldn't bet on that. But you, but, go ahead.
Well, all I'm saying is, they're out for right now, and I'll start moving people in on Friday.
Alrighty. Doc, you got anything back there?
We do, we do.
You do, okay, come on up.
Dr. Solomon and I represent the Dallas County Active Transportation Committee again. Shane and Charlie were at Tuesday council meeting. Talking about Bridge one eighty-eight, we strongly are encouraging a pedestrian access to, when that bridge is rebuilt, some type of way to get across that bridge pedestrian. We just want to give it on the record that we would like that included.
Who's the engineer on that project?
Derek. Melissa.
So, did you, you'll have to be sure that you get.
I mean, he knows about it, he's gonna look it over, but he's a.
And, and we're gonna, we're gonna talk privately, also meet privately to discuss it.
I'm gonna be honest with you, it's gonna come down to funding this year. You already know what the price tag of the bridge is.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, all right, thank you, sir. Anybody in the crowd got anything else, Nate? Just here to observe.
I didn't even see Nate back there, good to see you. The one on old US fifty.
Which one, the EMS?
The one that we received, on the bypass one in.
I was waiting on you on that one, right? Is that, is that for you?
I think.
So, Alex has the EMS event fund.
There's an, should be an ordinance in your package creating EMS events fund, for lack of a better term. And this is to receive monies that are paid by school corporation, organizations out at the fairgrounds that are contracting with EMS to provide services during events. We just need a fund for all of that money to go into, and the use of the fund will be, for any law, the purpose of the EMS department, the have, the fund, use of funds has to be approved by commissioners.
I have a motion to approve the EMS fund.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
unanimous?
That's all I have.
And then, if you get a chance, before we move on to the normal stuff, did you get a chance to look at the holiday schedule and?
Not really, I just started looking now.
On the meeting schedule, that first October meeting for next year may have to be adjusted, not to be adjusted to October meeting next year.
Did you check with the schools on the spring break and all that yet?
They say it was like a week off. They said that it is gonna be similar, but they didn't have any dates yet until December.
Someone is adjusting, I guess, if that happens.
Just that one.
I was told they follow the Career Center's schedule, which is already set.
Career Center?
FYI for future.
If you want to wait on that one to approve it, we can bring that back to the next meeting, just, we can check with the Career Center.
Opened down, still bound to keep that. Okay.
We want to table it all?
Just, well, table this part. So, we're gonna table the holiday schedule, because I've had like some negative feedback on one of our holidays, so need a opportunity to discuss it, and then, I'm okay with the, with the. Well, I guess I'm not.
Let's just do the payroll schedule.
Do the payroll schedule.
Table these two.
We really even need to vote on payroll schedule?
You don't really, I bring it, you don't really have to approve it, though.
Well, let's just table it then.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to table.
Okay, unanimous? Is there anything else I'm forgetting other than prior minutes, and we got, we have to approve prior minutes about executive section, figure out?
There's two sets of minutes.
Okay, I have a motion to approve both sets of minutes.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Unanimous? And then, I have a motion to approve payroll plans.
Matt, first, I got something from the sheriff, he said that we wanted us to discuss, I guess at some point, we had approved, or maybe it was last year, DOC funds that were received for inmate holds, and then the DOC billing for medical, that we had approved for that to go into a non-reverting fund, that could be used to offset medical and food costs, but there was never an ordinance?
Well, that would've been something I would've done, so, South Kenny, I apologize, we'll get it done at the December meeting.
All right, so are you, you're going to?
I'll prepare it if I am already, yeah.
I thought I remembered us doing that.
I thought so, too.
I thought so, too, that's what I.
He said it's approved, but there.
No, we never done that one.
I know, we discussed it.
Oh, so he's saying we did approve it.
Right, we did approve it, not the ordinance.
Did we make the motion for that?
Not yet.
Did we do payroll plans?
Not yet.
I think I interrupted. I'll second Shane's motion.
Actually, I thought I made the motion, but you need a little bit.
Hey, the newspaper isn't here today.
What's going on?
Must be something more important than us.
Is that raining, or did air conditioners?
Here, the HVAC.
I've never noticed it to be that loud.
Me either.
You sure it's not raining?
That's weird. I've never heard that.
So, they need to change the air filter, then. All the times I've been in here, I've never heard that.
I think it's a conspiracy. I think they got it set so the air conditioner don't come on when we're in here, so that it will get hot, and we'll meetings will have to go quicker. Somebody forgot to set it so they didn't come on.
They had it cranking in here Tuesday night.
Eric, one from yesterday, I had a message called from the side, and we need some air in the front room.
Sherry, did you find out anything about the tree? Because I, like, sent a message to extension, and they swear up and down that that tree that went around the world was planted at the high school, not at the fairgrounds. You can't think of anything I'm forgetting, Eric, can you, little buddy?
Nope.
Did you guys run out staples this week? Every one of mine was on staples. They don't have no staples on. I thought maybe you ran.
Probably because I dropped them for stapling them upside down last week.
Yeah.
Well, I think, no, last week they were right, because I think so, mine was.
The week before, they were.
Are you saying you can't do it right?
Um, I didn't look at this.
Could you run the, the paperclip or staples?
I don't care, I just give you a hard time over. But they are with us, so I do.
I feel like I'm forgetting something.
No, I'm always saying, last week they were good. Last week they were.
Before everyone leaves, I'd like to invite you to partake in the donuts, because I definitely do not need them. So anybody that wants a donut, and I see Alex looking at me with intent eyes, he's very hungry. So we'll just give Alex first pick of the donuts.
Don't start me at a good time.
Huh?
Don't start me at a good time, no, that's too much, too much icing for me. I just want to claim, claim a donut.
In there wasn't.
I was going to say Kyle ate that whole box.
That's a plain donut. That one right there? But they smell amazing, I'm telling you. I just definitely don't need it, too much sugar for me. It was the, it was the helicopter guys that brought it here.
Oh, okay.
I'm thinking job security, because they brought us donuts hoping that we'd have corn there.
Yup.
You guys good?
We get all the, we get the two medium minutes.
That's good.
We're good.
Speak now or forever hold your peace, anybody else got anything? If not, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
No adjourn.
Unanimous. Thank you all for coming, and don't forget donuts.